Planning board on parcel three, we duly applied for this variance, which is exactly the same request relating to the the use of the same exact property, the same driveway. All we're doing here is extending, going further on our own property in Franklin, to go and extend on the parcel three. So the benefit of the use of the driveway, whereas before it was only for the parcel one, now it's for the so continuing on, uh, going over to parcel three. The Greg will go and give you a little run through on the plans, but I'll just quickly summarize the legal arguments, which are the same as we went through on parcel one. Our first argument, and I won't go through all the minutia, but we you maintain the position that a use variance uh, is not even required anyway. We went through the arguments of how our neighbor, the LMP solar project um, was treated. There were some arguments about how that project came out of litigation, and there might have been some procedural differences. We don't believe that's the case, and we provided the documentation. And we believe a a fair and and proper analysis is to treat us in the same manner uh, as LMP. Regardless of that agreement or disagreement, uh, what we came out of the the board with on the last hearing was at least some consensus on how the Dover amendment, or at least the ninth paragraph of the Dover amendment, applies to a request such as this. And in our application materials, I quoted from some language that we went through at the last meeting, and you received, this board received some advice from your town council through uh, Ms. Stein. We do agree that Dover amendment paragraph nine, that it applies, and that at a minimum, it means that any denial of a use variance would have to be predicated upon a finding by this board of a significant public health or safety concern. And as we've gone through the planning board and received unanimous approval on both parcel one and parcel three, there is no public health, safety, or hazard at all that has been confirmed and approved, and certainly none that rises to that level. Based on that, uh, and together with showing that we need this access, and we do not have alternatives to be able to go and utilize our property, the variance was granted for parcel one. And so for those same reasons, and for precisely the same grounds relating to the same driveway, we are asking that this board also grant a variance to use the same access way so that we can go and go and proceed on to parcel three. For purposes of the of a decision, we think the exact same language of the decision that was approved for parcel one is exactly what should be utilized for parcel three, merely changing a couple of property designations. And so we're happy to answer any questions. I'll ask Greg to just do a quick demonstration. Uh, but we think this is something that is eligible for and would be appropriate for uh, a vote this evening, and that would be our request. So with that, I'll turn it over to Greg and and have him, Daniel, or I answer any questions you may have.
Yeah, thanks, Peter. The only few things I was gonna add, and I was kind of flipping through the two plans that I had up, uh, just as a reminder. So off on screen here, you have the the aerial, just to help remind everybody about what parcel one is versus uh, parcel two, which is the lot in the middle, and then parcel three, which is the the application that's in front of you. And um, as we discussed in prior meetings, again, everything in the north was part of parcel one, utilizing existing access road that services the golf course today. The southern portion of the the parcel parcel three doesn't have any direct access out to Maple Street. Um, there's a, there's a utility um, corridor easement that's there that can be utilized for emergency access, but not uh, not servicing as an actual uh, full movement access drive. Um, so in the plan that's in front of you, just again, the the area to the north, what we did was we we turned off the uh, the solar improvements, but left on the the access roads. You kind of really see how the access road from the north then uh, connects through. Uh, remember, both projects have fencing around the entire property with access gates that have locks. So this this should not be a road that becomes available and access to the public. This is solely for private use and the the two owners to be able to have access to come in and out. Um, which again, takes place basically four times a year. Um, so very limited uh, interaction between the two, but we are looking for that, you know, um, acknowledgement to continue to use the main access drive, coming through lot one, coming through lot two, and then all all access for lot three will be at the bottom through there.
Thank you, Greg. Thank you, Peter. I had the, my first question is, uh, to access parcel three, you have to go through parcel one, right?
That's correct.
In this case, there's no other way. And for the utility access road, how come that can be used as a main access?
So that road right now is is just a a single lane. It's about twelve feet wide, just wide enough for basically emergency vehicle. Uh, you, we did seek out uh, permission from New England Power to use that for more than just mercy access. And basically, that was that was denied of saying, we're not gonna, that's not supposed to be there as a permanent road. They're not using, they're not gonna allow us to use that asset because of access road.
Okay. Do the four members have any question?
Can you zoom in on, I know that much of this property is in Franklin. Can you just tell me where the actual Bellingham?
Yeah, I can do it on either one. This one might be even better. The red line is the tap, the town line. So you can see here that in the north, it's really the few lots that come up the main entrance drive um, to the course, as soon as you come around the bend, once you get into the first parking area that's there now, and the clubhouse, that's all part of Franklin.
Yep.
Yeah, and then on parcel three, if I can zoom in a little bit here, there's the one lot. That lot today has actually really no golf course improvements on it. It's just the all wetlands and then the access easement for the overhead lines.
And in what, can you show what's gonna go there?
Yes. So if I go to the proposed plan, I can zoom in over here. What you can see is this, this entire area just remains as open wetlands. Um, we we have on your edge of our improvements here, this defense line. Um, all the solar improvements and everything is gonna still remain on the Franklin side of the lot. Um, there is an opening for an emergency access point down at the corner to still use that for again, for fire, for fire and emergency access.
Then in terms of what people see from Maple Street?
Yeah, you can't, you can't see anything through Maple Street. We have several hundred feet of existing vegetation that's gonna remain. Um, our utilities that are crossing the wetlands are all underground, so we're not proposing overhead clearing or anything. So there there will be no visual impact.
Yeah, you remember during the planning board proceedings where we, uh, you guys didn't want us to affect any of the trees, we're actually boring that whole connection um, using an underground floor instead of the traditional trench.
In in the gate, that gate?
No, the the gate that's down here is, again, it's several hundred feet. Um, the easement itself that is on the other side, that's three hundred and fifty foot wide easement, so we're like four hundred, four hundred and fifty feet from the street, Maple Street frontage, where you see the fence and the gate.
It's around, right?
Yes, it 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 kind of bends and falls the vegetation, and there's a a small opening where there there's a clearing today, but yeah, you you can't, you're not gonna see it. Could be like looking through and trying to see the the golf flag uh, there on those holes now. Yeah.
Are those wetlands? Um, is it gonna be like a retention fund, or what is that?
Nope, that it's not part of our stormwater management system at all. That all stays exactly the way it is all.
Although it is just staying.
Literally just staying as is today. Wetlands. Nope, we're not gonna grade in there. We're not disturbing it. We're not clearing it.
Somebody asked why you need access to the area if you're not doing anything with it?
No, so we need access to the Franklin side. So so we're just coming through. We still wanna get permission to come through Bellingham, because that's where the access is for the north. Come through.
Oh, we don't want, it's a separate entrance to Maple Gate. I'm sorry, to the Maple Street.
That's right. So we don't have a separate punch through here. We're not, we're not proposing a separate disturbance to get another access to Maple Street. We're only using the one up at the at the north entrance drive.
Well, just.
Greg, why don't we just do a quick run through from Maple Street down to parcel three, just so they could follow?
Uh, yeah, so yeah, if I if I were to um, enter in a car for maintenance or anything, I have to come in through the the same access drive that is used for the golf course today. You come up, I have to, I have to get gated access into parcel one, drive down the the gravel access road that services uh, the the solar development to the north. Come through another gate that's at the the south parcel uh, portion of parcel one, cut across the gravel that's uh, shown on on the parcel two, go through another gate that accesses me into the the opening for parcel three, and then I have access into the developed parcel three. And leaving is the exact same thing, just in reverse order.
So it's simply using the existing access um, as the same access for parcel one that was approved through the use variance by this board last month.
That's correct.
And uh, just to ask the the obvious question, I guess, but there's no opportunity to access from the Franklin side. Because it looks like it's all wetlands on that other.
Franklin is completely landlocked. Franklin does not have any other access roads. Yep, so yeah, all these parcels of Franklin that have always had the access through the through the Bellingham lots.
And.
Be just solar.
That's correct. That's all we're posing is just solar.
And the decision um, that was issued for the north is uh, did just that. It's the variance was granted with the limitation of the solar use, which we were fine with, and we would ask for the same language for for this approval.
And then parcel two would not come before the board, because that's all within Franklin?
That's, that that just had no credit development, permanent.
This would simply be, this would allow us to, this would give us use variance for purposes of accessing parcel parcel three. There's nothing happening in parcel two, and if we ever want, if anybody ever wanted to, they have to come before the planning board as well as the ZVA. But there will be no application on that. Parcel two is just staying as is.
Let me just kind of summarize this, so I understand this. Uh, speak, even though the area that's part of Bellingham will not be touched in parcel three, because it's part of the whole area of parcel three, you have to still have to have permission.
No, so what happened, as part of the planning board approval, the planning board made it a condition of approval that we come to the zoning board to seek permission to have access through the north project to get down to the south project.
To to get to have, to deal with the use variance.
That's correct.
So I think the rationale for that is that we're passing through a residential zone to get to Franklin's industrial zone. Uh, and so even though we're not doing any use period on any Bellingham property, we're still accessing another.
Yeah, I understood that for the first part, okay.
Right, and the 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 planning board just felt that given that that was a zoning uh, use issue that, you know, so they dealt with access and approval and all and all of that, but it's a zoning issue. They felt that should have been decided by the zoning board of appeals. And so they asked us to uh, to come before you to get any approval that may be needed. And the opinion that the that this board has received is that we should apply for and obtain a use variance.
The gate on parcel. Oh, sorry. Good, Peter, I'm sorry.
No, I I was just saying, and purely for the use of the access way, not the solar solar operation or anything in Franklin.
The gate on parcel three is just for emergency access?
That's correct. The one, well, the one that I was describing before, that's down by the uh, power line easement, that's only for emergency access.
That's, that's, that's the white word bill. So all of, for operational purposes, all of the access goes through.
That's correct.
This one is just simply if there's some sort of emergency.
Yeah, exactly.
Like essentially, in your planning board decision, it says we expressly can't use, nobody can use that road except for emergency services. We we were not allowed to drive on it for all intents.
Yeah, and all the documents do specify that. We all note that those are only shown as emergency access points for fire emergency service.
Is that noted on the plans?
It is, yep.
So if the power company changes their stance with regard to that easement, with this decision.
Yeah, so I would recommend, like, when I put in these comments and my staff comments for that memo, is that as part of this, if you do grant approval, I would put a finding in there or a condition, but it would probably be better with a finding that that is only used as emergency access. It is not for maintenance access like uh, the access to parcel one.
By the applicant.
Correct. Yeah, correct.
It's not gonna be open to anyone else, but.
Correct. And I think, I mean, I, that's pretty much how the planning board decision was written, and I think it would just be good to utilize that, because that is a good point, Brian. If the power line uh, company says, you know, oh, yeah, where you access, well, this permit will state that it's only emergency anyway, so you can't.
Yep.
And what about this other, there's the other kind of path, that's the uh, maintenance one, is that just emergency?
Uh, oh, no, so the the uh, the one that's in the middle, that kind of cuts through the LMP property, which is the other solar project that's there today? That's also noted as just another means for emergency address. That's not that's not part of another access drive that we're trying to.
So it all just comes through the one main?
That's right. Oh, that's correct. Yep.
Any other questions? Can open up to the phone. That's okay. Um, anyone, any members from the public online or present persons have any questions about this hearing? You're none? Great, um. Shall we close the hearing and discuss it?
I don't know if we wanna close it, why don't we?
You wanna do a promotion for a draft, or what do you think, Brian? What's the best?
Yeah, I think that would be to, but keep the hearing open until.
Yeah, until we wrap this.
Yep.
I just have one question. Um, what kind of gate will be there?
Um, we have a call down as like a, a basically a double chain link, uh, think seven foot high.
Where are you?
Chain link gate.
Where are you talking? You can't read my mind.
Yeah.
Yeah, emergence, I'm saying point eight. Uh, the emergency access.
Okay, yeah, gate, that's what I think Greg thought.
Yeah, it's it's, sorry, it's basically like a chain link fence, like double, double wide gate.
Can you see through it?
Yes, yeah, these gates don't have um, screen meshing, right? So it's a little bit meshed chain link.
The other, uh, that coincides, the other, the perimeter fence that goes around this entire parcel.
Yep.
Is that also just chain link?
That's right.
So it will be viewable from four ninety-five mainly?
Yes, there's there's still a good amount of vegetation that exists between the edge of the property line and four ninety-five. But yes, if you see through the woods, you'd be able to see a chain link fence that runs the perimeter of the site.
But as you guys saw during your site walk, it's not gonna be visible from any Bellingham roads. Um, there's, we were very careful to leave all the vegetated buffer, and then on the access that we're actually talking about, the north access, um, at at your recommendation, we're leaving the existing wooden gate, we're leaving the
Yep.
Um, uh, picket fence that exists now, so everything should look exactly the same from a residents perspective. Um, if someone happens to look from four ninety-five, you know, they should be. So the other, I mean, this isn't really relevant, but the other nearby solar array has kind of the white fence.
It was to, yeah.
As a visual.
To hide it from.
But I guess there is no vegetation in that.
Yeah, or a lot less vegetation.
Yes, I'm there. And is it black, is it like a black chain link, or what do you guys typically do?
No, we just have it as, you have a nice seal, uh, seal, so. Uh, but yeah, and and to your point, that that project is like right along the site frontage.
Yeah.
There's no ours is like a couple hundred feet back, because we we're not really doing anything along the the properties that front on Maple Street. It's all just the components back into the Franklin side.
So nothing would be viewable from Bellingham other than those gates really, and the fence?
You wouldn't even see that gate. You, all you'd see is still what you see when you look at the golf course entrance.
Okay.
That's it. We even actually on that plan for the north proposed more landscaping and stuff that has enhanced buffering along that frontage. So all you're gonna see is more trees and still the same decorative gate that's there now.
Yeah, so a gate, that's what chain link gate is gonna be a few hundred feet past the.
Yeah, it's gonna be further up the drive. You will see that, but, yeah.
The uh, the the screening from the Bellingham side, does that seem independent?
No, it's gonna be pretty pretty year round. I think most of the plantings we put in were more more evergreens and stuff, and understory plantings to to bring something down. No, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I meant for the parcel one. We don't really have much vegetation that we're putting in on parcel three.
We're not removing anything. There's no, not a lot of room.
It's not exactly a dense forest there, you know?
That that's true, that's true. It's it's got some seasonal element, because there is a lot of deciduous trees and stuff in that wetland pocket now. Yeah.
No other question? So we go with the drafting decision in lieu to what was set for possible with some additions? Yeah, I guess if we do it for Rob to draft it, right?
Yeah, you, I assume you're, you want approval, not denial, decision draft, and
Yeah.
Um, yeah, and I can put conditions together and we keep the the public hearing open, we can discuss, and if uh, attorney Brown or applicant has any questions or feedback, we can discuss during that meeting, you know, so.
Is there anything different than the first?
I don't believe so. For me, given that the planning board already had the conditions for emergency access use, and it's clear in the plan, I don't think we need to add that again.
Correct.
Yes, so if we think of anything, we'll let you know.
Yeah, sure.
I guess the only one I can think of is what Brian was saying. I mean, would you entertain any possibility to add some vegetative kind of a buffer, any vegetation okay in that? So three yards, it just, you know, I'm happy to add. I mean, my answer is, we went through the planning board process and went through over screening and everything for over eight months. And we're talking about access through the north. We're not even really talking about any elements of of this besides access. So, I mean, I don't even know if you can condition. I'm not, you know, um, if you can see this during the winter after it's built, you know, I think I could definitely commit to putting in some green mesh. Um, but I mean, more of a handshake deal on record here, um. You know?
Yeah, yeah, well, I I I just, you know, given the, all the different decisions that we have worked through, we just wanted to be careful about not adding, I don't, I don't wanna run afoul of any other promises or things that we've done to accommodate the requests or the conditions provisions of other boards. So we did have to, you know, work for quite some time with the planning board and satisfy everyone there. We did, we got a unanimous approval on both. Same thing with conservation. So sometimes just one, you know, doing one thing could have an impact or address a concern that we did for something else. But that being said, if the the board has any particular um, interest in anything, because we we intend to be active partners in the community. Uh, we're doing a donation and working and doing trainings with the fire department. Uh, I'm sure we'll be talking with Rob and the staff, and we're always available for any uh, commentary or um, or suggestions that you may have. And I I think it's gonna be a good positive future relationship, and we could probably deal with anything without getting into conditions on a, on a use variance.
Yeah, that's fair enough.
Great.
Yeah. Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Take your time.
Thank you.
We'll continue uh, July.
I think you just need a motion to continue in July.
Right. I got a second.
Bob, is that just, sorry, is that July eleventh at seven o'clock in person?
Correct.
Okay.
Robin Stein, town council, everybody.
Looking for the, the time, not just looking for the time, please stay certain on the motion, that's all. So folks know when to come.
It was changed, a a motion for uh, the uh, planet to prepare a draft uh, favorable decision along with the condition, the the uh, with similar terms as the north.
That is what what you were discussing. Rob's gonna draft that.
Okay.
Yeah, it's been seconded, so.
It's been seconded, and now we can vote all in favor?
Just to be clear, we're just voting to continue.
We're voting to continue the hearing.
Yeah, correct, on July.
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, gentlemen. Moving on to uh, general business, we have uh, one hundred and ninth Patricia Drive, document renewal of um, license there. Do we just go go ahead and forward? We don't have a, do we have a reading cert?
Uh, no, this is general business, so I can give you just an update.
Is animal control here or anything, or no, you're just, you'll just give the update?
Yeah, I was gonna give the update. We did reach out to animal control and border health. Neither uh, department have received any complaints. I was gonna have them on file, so, um, and then this one. Shut it up. So this special permit was to allow six dogs. And there was also a condition in there that if if the, if dogs would end up being rehomed or passed away, the maximum number of dogs for the house would then go down to four dogs, so. And to the best of my knowledge, that is still cadenced.
Um, I don't know if the, the applicant's here, but.
All right, it's me.
Great. If you'd like to sit in the front, please. Um, if you don't mind stating your name and your address.
Mariana Montenegro, one hundred and nine Patricia Drive. So the permit's actually under my brother's name, for several reasons. Um, due to a medical emergency with my nephew, he can't be here, so I'm here. Um, there's still the six dogs, no issues. I mean, all of my neighbors bought them, so that's a good thing. Um, sorry, what was your question? Or what was the comment? Sorry.
Yeah, you, I think you answered, just making sure there are still six dogs.
Yeah.
Premise.
Yeah, so, yeah, they're part of the family now, so. Yeah, it's like, we can't rehome them now that they're so used to us.
Has anything changed with the premise itself, or with the dog care, or?
No, um.
Still the same?
Still the same, yeah. So they're never alone at the house. Someone's always home. I work from home, so very controlled. So like, we got them out, we got them inside. We like, we make sure we follow all the rules that you guys set up.
Right.
Is it same six dogs?
Yes.
Oh, good question.
Yes.
Is it, are these the dogs that um, your brother moved from another country, maybe?
No.
No.
That was it, yeah.
That's a different one?
Yeah.
Well, I didn't. I can't remember now. How did the, he comes into possession of six dogs?
So we had the mom and the dad, um, they had a kind of, they, they both, they had a litter. Due to COVID, we were just planning on keeping four dogs, but due to COVID, not a lot of people wanted them. We actually did get one. But another family, she got it, but then they brought her back. It was one of like, like, that was like, she was still like eight weeks. So it was that situation where like, we don't want it, like, that dog to end up in a shelter and.
Can you remind me what kind of dog they were?
They're huskies.
Huskies, this is, okay, now I remember.
Yeah.
So there was the pups and there was the huskies.
These are the huskies.
Yes, I thought this was the pups one, to be honest.
That's what I thought at first, but, yeah.
Thank you for clarifying.
Did you construct the fence?
Yes, we did, yep. Um, any issues with the fence were very um, diligent, like, if there's any issues, we fix it right away. Just so we don't have any issues with anyone in town or our neighbors. Yeah.
And did you, well, your brother was, he come before us and asked for additional time for the fence or something?
I think that was at the beginning, right, like, when we first got the the permit, um, because we had to change all of the fence.
And then he did it afterwards.
Yeah, so we, we did it. I mean, there was like a storm, I think, last year. Like, a fence fell down, so next day, it was fixed.
Couldn't remember. Chill off.
I'm better than all of you. I'm sorry.
It's recorded.
Yeah.
Any other questions? And I guess I, we're just um, approving to renew a ban for another term?
Correct, yep, for another year, so you can, wanna make a motion to to base. Correct, yep, for another year, so you can, wanna make a motion to, to basically renew for another year and then I will just draft a letter that goes to the town clerk that states that. Voted on it and it was approved, so then that way, when they go to get their license, or actually then renew it. It's on record with the town clerk that you have decided to renew it, so.
There's a annual renewal provision in the underlying agreement, uh. Decision, so they'll come back anyways until there's. Something less than.
Five, one thirty-four, right?
One thirty-four, yeah.
I'll understand that motion of the board's way.
Yeah, so motion to what, to reapprove?
Yeah, to renew, uh, the dog kennel license for one oh nine Patricia Drive.
For another, another year. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Don't move. Alright, thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Have a good night.
You too. Next in, uh, general business, we have Lakeview Estates, uh, with an extension request. I believe, I believe the applicant is on Zoom. And I'm just gonna repeat.
Hi folks.
That's right, hi Angela.
Hi, Angela Conforti for, uh, South Center Realty for the record. Yeah, just here for, um, an extension request, I think. Actually, the request, uh, sent it to Amy a long time ago, I think it's like November thirtieth. Um, is.
Correct.
The date I'm looking for, we have, uh. Just a couple of punch list items left, really just, uh, as built preparation, we are working with the Conservation Commission at the moment on, um, some, uh. Flooding in the rain gardens in the, uh, around parcel C, which is in the interior of Candlelight and Northern Lights, so. We're gonna try to alleviate that flooding for the homeowners on the low side of that parcel C, um, and. We're, I think, just about arrived at a solution, uh, but need to file an NOI, so that remains. And then the mitigation, the traffic mitigation project on South Main and Center Street, that one, we're currently building. A retaining wall and once the retaining wall is done, that will allow us to put in the guardrails and the thermoplastic striping and. You know, really just kind of finish things up, so that'll be done soon as well, so hopefully we'll be done. This summer with all of that and looking for street acceptance at, uh, an upcoming town meeting.
Right.
That for a reasonable amount of time?
I do, I believe so, I think, um, you know, it might take a couple of months to go through the conservation process, cause it is. It's not. I wanna say it's a mountain that they have to climb over, but you know, it's a substantial revision, I think that they have to look at, um, so that might take a little bit of time, but I think. Working through to the end of the summer, I think it's a pretty reasonable estimation and. Also, just to add, as Angela mentioned, um, I know myself, DPW have been out, actually a couple of times now to. The site to go over the punch list items, they are working through those and Angela's correct, they really whittled it down to just a couple of things, um. So, yes, to, I think that that is, that is a fair assumption, what, um, what Angela's saying.
The extension from June till November, when, when was it supposed to?
The, to be honest with you, I'm not entirely sure when the deadline ended, it may have already passed, so this request is really just, I think, to document and. Really for Lakeview Estates, I think, don't try and hold the deadline to finish this off. So, you know, if the punch list items go past November and the, um. Concom items aren't really finished up by November, I mean, I think there'll be a conversation between, you know, my office and Angela to. See when the next extension would be, so. But.
Is anyone else doing the, kind of the inspection or the site walkthrough other than you and DPW?
Uh, it's mostly myself and DPW, yeah, I mean, conservation's gonna be involved now with, it's. I, it's parcel three, right, that, that's the open space, Angela, that's.
Parcel C as in cat.
Sorry, parcel C, not parcel three, parcel C, so that's, that is going to be, I think. I think conservation's gonna be heavily involved, looking at that, now that an NOI is gonna be in front of them for that. So it'll be the, our three departments, okay?
Brian, just curious, how was it from your point of view?
It's been fine, I think it's, yeah. Yep. Shall I open it to the public, if there's anyone?
Yeah.
Um, anyone from the public, in, in here or online? Being on here now?
Okay, right, so I'll move to, uh, extend, right?
Yeah, extend.
Till November, whatever, the year.
Thirtieth?
Yeah, November thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
So it'll be on, in December, will we hear it or will it come back on November?
I think the idea, Angela, correct me if I'm wrong. This is to give you some buffer, cause I assume you're gonna try and get in front of the fall town meeting?
Correct, yeah.
So that, I believe, I think that's at, it's either the end of October or the beginning of November, I believe, is the fall town meeting, so. Um. This might not come back in front of you, I can forget how it works with the closeout of the permit, but I can get that information, figure out when they come back. They'll, actually, I imagine you'll be coming back to, for the, um, reduction of the bond, correct?
Yeah, I'll be back for a bond reduction and, um. I mean, if we don't make it to the fall town meeting, then, um, I guess I, you know, can come back in December and ask for another extension or if, if you have a meeting in November after town meeting, that would be fine.
Wanna do it? I just, I think perhaps sticking it to a meeting. As, as opposed to the end of the month. Um, but I don't, I have no logic for that other than just scheduling for me.
Yeah, well, I guess, since it's general business, you're not gonna like continue, cause it's not a public hearing. Um, I think, you know, it'll be up to me to make sure that we're on top of getting them in front of ZDA again for an extension, uh, request. But since I know, you know, Angela and, you know, the company's trying to move forward as quick as possible to get the bond reduction and the. Roads accepted, I don't think we have to worry too much about, uh, trying to get Bradford back in here, right Angela?
Right, yeah.
Yeah, so, um, so I think we'll be okay if we do extend to November thirtieth, if you. Since that's the request anyway, you can ask the applicant to revise the request, but I would just recommend granting it to November thirtieth.
That one. Can I get a second? You don't say it, oh, you did, okay, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Don't move. Thank you very much, Angela.
Thank you, guys, enjoy the rest of your night.
Thank you as well. Angela, we'll be in touch, alright?
Yep, I'll be talking to you.
Thanks.
Alright, and then we have the update on the MBTA three A.
Yeah, let me show you.
Yes, thank you.
Yes. Yeah, so. And you are all probably aware, we, the town has created a subcommittee. To try and meet compliance with the MBTA Communities Law. Let me just pull up the PowerPoint. Not sure how aware everyone is, cause this might be the first time that you're seeing this, but. Basically, what our requirements are for, yeah, you can see that, right?
Yep.
So what we're required to do is we need to have a fifty acre area, um, overlay. That pretty much allows, um, these multi-family units by right, so. It wouldn't be allowed through a special permit process, it's by right, so it would most likely go through just a development plan review process in front of the planning board. And. What we need to have, and these are all mandated by the state. Our unit yield is required at seven hundred fifty units, which is substantial, that's, that's a lot of housing units, cause there is no. Requirement for the number of bedrooms, there's no requirement for the square footage, it is just seven hundred fifty units on fifty acres by right. That is it, which is far denser than, uh.
The new apartment buildings that have been constructed.
Correct, um.
Like Curtis apartments?
Yeah, the current, so the minimum gross unit density for seven fifty divided by fifty is, that'd be fifteen units per acre. So that's, that is the density that we're looking at, which, that is substantial. Now, the Curtis Apartments actually is around fifteen units per acre, it might be actually a little bit over, but, yeah, but. Imagine fifty acres of that, which would be pretty difficult to, to comprehend, so, um. Basically, the MBTA Communities Subcommittee, we pretty much had three options. One was just outright, tell the state, we're not doing it, forget about it, the issue is, is that the state has already. Said that all of our grant money that we get from the state will be out the window if we don't comply, and it's the law. So they've threatened lawsuits as well, so. We don't really wanna go down.
What happened with the town that, I believe three towns so far in Massachusetts rejected it?
Correct, and I know at least one of the towns had grants pulled for, I think it was.
Lexington one of them?
It, I think Lexington is one of the towns that said no to it, I'm trying to remember what town.
Rob, no, Lexington actually had their plan already approved, they're.
Okay.
They're actually ahead, they've submitted and, and gotten approval, I think it's ten towns that are, that have voted no or in non-compliance, um. And, yeah, I'm not sure which ones, but I am pretty sure Milton was being sued by the Attorney General over this, I'm not sure, um. Who's losing grants, and if that's happened yet, but those are, those are what are on the table.
And I believe Milton is the one that there was a grant pulled for some type of wall or infrastructure that. If I recall right, Liz?
It could be, um, it's, it's kinda hard to, to keep up with all, all the towns and everything that's going on.
Going on in Massachusetts with all, I should have mentioned too, Liz is on the Subcommittee. Huge wealth of knowledge, though. Liz, feel free to, to stop me or.
No, I think, um, I think you're trying to cram in a lot of information in a short period of time, like. Rob's giving you the really abridged version of all this, and I think the most important thing is we have. Community outreach meetings on Tuesday, so I think that's a good forum for everyone on the board to come at, at either one o'clock. Or seven o'clock at the senior center on the eleventh. Um, and we can send a reminder to everyone, or, you know, Rob, you can hand out one, give them, attach one of the flyers. Um, the, the second important thing is that Mass Housing Partnership, um, has had grants available to hire consultants to basically help. Municipalities come into compliance, if that's what they so choose, or that's the route they're taking. So we've been working with a consultant for several months that Mouse, a Mass Housing Partnership grant had, grant is paid for, so, um. You know, in pretty much every municipality facing. This regulation has utilized these grants to hire consultants to figure out all the technical complexities of this. But again, Rob, I think where you were headed with this is, we could have either said no, we could have either, um. Decided to comply right away, and I think. The point you're getting to is the, the proposed plan that we and the consultant have been working on, so maybe. Go that route, and then I would suggest that everyone kind of come to the community outreach, because we'll be able to answer a lot more detailed questions there.
Correct, yes, now, all I was going to say was that our approach was basically to comply, so our grants are not. Totally in jeopardy, but also instead of looking at, hey, how can we get, you know, the minimum unit yield of seven hundred fifty units? How can we maybe approach this and see if there's a way to not have such an exorbitant amount of development? Hinder Bellingham, so, and I will just say that.
What is the, um, question?
I can show you that the. Proposed locations, just very quickly, this is one of them, it's the Charles, which. On this map, the Charles is this lot here. And we're including another portion that wraps around, a lot of it's wetlands, but. Our consultant went through this whole technical model to make sure that we comply with the state's requirements and. Using this as one of the areas will work, and then the other one is to. Put the other portion of the overlay on top of the Curtis Apartments. And the purpose of this is rather than putting the overlay on raw land where a developer will absolutely utilize the by right development. Put it on, uh, sites that are already developed that, I mean. Technically, they, somebody could buy the Curtis, demolish it, which has been, what is it, two years old now? And then build something new, but that's highly unlikely, so this approach is to really try and, and. Keep the unit yield down, so.
Rob, can I just interject? Um, yeah, so we found out, we knew that we could all, put this overlay on top of existing real estate, we didn't realize that we could. Put it over already built multi-family, you know, high dense housing, um, so, um. And have sort of those units quote unquote count, they're not really counting towards the total, but. Given that we presume no one's gonna tear down the Curtis to rebuild it. That the additional lots that you see attached to this, you know, I don't, it's almost twenty-five acres, I believe. Would, they would be able to build an additional, I think Dennis Frain said, a hundred and eighty units or something like that, and that would get to the number. Which again, this is very, it's all technical, but the amount that would be. Potentially developed is limited because there's already housing units underneath, under this overlay, if that makes sense.
Yep.
Yeah, it does, yeah, so that's pretty much just the overview, and like Liz said, we're. There's gonna be a much more in-depth conversation next Tuesday, June eleventh, we have two outreach meetings, one at one o'clock at the senior center and one at seven o'clock at the senior center. Um, we will be there to answer any questions, our consultant's gonna be there and. Happy to kinda go over with the community what we've come up with, cause this is really the first time that people are seeing this definitive approach, so. And there has been a lot of discussion about this, so, um. That's where we're at with that, so I just wanted to give a brief overview, just so the ZDA is aware.
Thanks for the.
Oh yeah, no problem. Just a quick question. Sure, but, um, so. Everyone, does the town decide to move with this approach, does that just get codified in zoning somehow, like in the bylaws that this is designated?
Correct, so our.
That whoever, a developer would, if they were looking to do.
Yep.
This, they would only have those options.
Correct, and our consultant is tasked with actually drafting the bylaw, which will go on the town meeting warrant. Article, that's what they will be drafting, um, cause it. The one other item to note with this too is that the Subcommittee was formed really just to come up with a solution. The Subcommittee is not the one that decides if this gets approved or not, it goes to town meeting, so if, I know there are people who are. Totally against this and just don't want it, so they have the right during town meeting to vote against it, this is just the solution that. The Subcommittee came up with, so.
One other just, but question, um. Do you know with Franklin, I'm just curious that, um, I mean, it seems like we have to do it, you know, cause if, but, um. I'm just wondering how bad traffic will get, because I imagine Franklin will probably wanna have similar thinking and then. Maybe wanna utilize their housing down, but I guess that is kinda. Do you know of the, of the town of Franklin, if they're looking at similarly using the, um, Westerly, is that what it is?
Uh, I believe, I don't know, Liz, if you know.
Um, yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't know about Franklin specifically, but there are other towns. In the municipality, um, I read an article about Chelmsford specifically, where they're doing something very similar. And they're putting their overlay on top of a apartment build, an apartment building that Trammell Crowe is currently under construction on, so, um. We've been told by our consultant that if it's in compliance, it's in compliance. Um, because we did kind of have a discussion, well, is this too good to be true, you know, is the AG gonna come back and say we're kind of. You know, skirting the intent of the regulation, but as far as I know, there's other towns that are doing the same exact, um. You know, um, method, if you will, and. Um, other towns, they want more dense housing, like Lexington, I think was one of them, where they. other towns, they want more dense housing, like Lexington, I think was one of them, where they actually are over the fifteen units per acre because they wanted more housing, so I think it really depends on municipality, um, and, and kind of the, the public sentiment, but we're not the only ones who have taken this approach.
No, it sounds like a good approach, I was just more kind of like, is the, like in the grape, if you're in the grapevine that Franklin is thinking of doing similarly down the road.
Yeah, so.
So that road which already has a lot of traffic is gonna have crazy traffic, that's all I was curious.
Yeah, um.
Cause they have the other big development that's just like the Curtis kinda.
Correct, and to ans- so to answer your question, I was in, I was in a regional planning meeting, I think it was two weeks ago, and Medway was in it, Franklin was in it, Hawkinson was in it, and we all discussed, this was pretty much what everybody wanted to talk about. And when in that meeting, I don't know if things have changed, but Franklin was looking at putting their overlay on top of their downtown area. Because I, apparently their downtown area already allows for substantial, uh, density. So really, it was some minor tweaks that they could do to their zoning to being conformance with, uh, state regulations, I don't know if it's been adopted yet, I don't know, um, if they changed their mind on that, but that's what I knew as of two weeks ago.
And obviously, I mean, I know it's not, you know, your purview, and that's great, Liz, that, you know, I, I thank everyone volunteering for that group.
Yeah.
And I think this sounds great, I was just curious if any heard anything.
Yeah, no.
But that's good to hear.
It is really good to know what, how other towns are, are approaching this, I know Medway was initially looking at putting this on a pretty large tract that was basically a vacant farm, and they since have totally pulled that idea, because if you put this on raw land, you can almost guarantee that the developer's gonna utilize that and try and get as many units as possible. And I think that the general public realized that, so I don't know what their approach is now, um, but that was what Medway was doing, I think what Hawkinson was doing, but I think they, they were having some issue, who's getting this approved?
Are, are towns allowed to talk to each other and plan accordingly?
Oh, yeah.
Ask that, right?
Yeah, we can, we can talk to each other, um, which is nice, cause like I said, we're in a lot of regional planning discussions, and I talked to other towns.
Is there a deadline to make a decision?
Yes, uh, we need to be in conformance by the end of this year, so December thirty-first, so we're aiming for, yeah, so we're aiming for fall town meeting.
You know what might be helpful to, for your outreach meetings is, um, it makes me thought of this already, quantify, cause Bellingham's a grant-dependent town.
Already ahead of you.
What's the number?
I have it written down, but it is, I think, Liz, if I'm not mistaken, when we had our first meeting talking about grants, I don't wanna, this is what I'm pretty sure was, I think we were looking at like in the five-year window, we could be anywhere between twenty to fifty mil at stake.
Yeah, that was a bit of a back-of-the-envelope type of, um, uh, math, but I think the, there's like twelve or thirteen grant programs that would be unavailable to the town, not just max mass work grants, so it could be grants for the library, grants for the, um, senior center, and Dennis Frain mentioned that, um, it, the one mass works grant that they're in the middle of working on is ten million dollars alone. Um, so, you know, that's pretty significant, and then this, I guess the state is also threatening to, um, either limit or restrict state aid, which is, you know, tens of millions of dollars every year as well, which would impact the seniors and, and other groups. And then the, the risk is also that we, any new grant programs that become available in the future, if you're still in non-compliance, you probably run the risk of not being eligible for those as well.
Yeah, and just to put in perspective, like the, that mass works grant that Dennis is referring to, the ten million one, that's not the one that's in the works currently on Hartford Ave next to Home Depot, that's a seven million dollar one, so just between those two, that's seventeen million. And that's, that's substantial, that's, that's out the window, so at our outreach meeting, that is absolutely going to be quantified based on a few years back, and then in the future, what's in the works, because that's really what's critical here for Bellingham.
The communities that have, I think, that have decided to challenge, and, and I don't like this, this unfunded mandate, this, it's a, it is a sledgehammer of a rule.
Absolutely.
I don't agree with it, but the communities that have challenged, I'm correcting if I'm wrong, Liz, those communities that have challenged the rules ha- are not grant-dependent communities. They have a tax base that is very, uh, heavy on their own.
Yeah, I think if you look at the list, and the state has a, an interactive map that they update, you know, every week, and the majority of towns, um, well, I should say the majority of towns, it's not the end of the year yet, so they haven't submitted, but of those, you know, there's a far larger number of towns that have approved this and have, or have submitted something, there's far less towns that are, have said no. Um, but if you look at the towns that have said no, I think their tax base is, uh, their tax bracket is, is slightly different than, than Bellingham, you know, um, uh, the towns specifically that are, they're really escaping me, but it's definitely not towns that probably rely pretty heavily on grants would be my best assumption.
The other thing too is that by wherever you put this, the town is bestowing a significant gift to the landowners. They're like, hey, we just rezoned your land, and you developed this to the maximum, you're welcome.
Yeah, and some towns have maybe approach of talking to a developer and seeing what they can come up with, but we have not done that, because it's kind of dangerous gamble when you have a non-official application in front of you and you're kind of, you're basically promised something, and you never know, once legislation passes, you don't know what you're getting, and that's a risky gamble, it's seven hundred fifty, so.
Also, I'm just curious, I guess it's, who knows, but, um, if the, if these were kind of part made, part of the bylaws or whatever, what do you anticipate after that? Would you get an onslaught of developers potentially coming, potentially interested, or you never know, that's the.
Yeah, you never know, and I think the idea is, like, for example, most of this side, the mechanic street one is on the Curtis Apartments, so I highly doubt that, um, the Curtis was, um, trying to remember the developer, it was, you know, I, I don't envision that they would sell it to somebody else, but they might, you know, you never know, you're right. Um, and I think that's kind of where we're trying to take this approach, that we wouldn't want a vacant parcel where every developer is just going to be bidding like crazy on this, and then here comes application goers coming into our office, so. Yeah.
So the eleven.
The eleven, yes.
The outreach meetings then?
What was that?
What's, how often are the outreach?
So, our subcommittee meetings have been, I don't know, Liz, once or twice a month, you'd say?
Yes, yep.
Yeah, so, and for the outreach meetings, this is the first one on June eleventh.
At one.
At one and seven, we're gonna do another, we haven't come up with a date yet, but we're gonna do another one after the summer, into the fall, before town meeting, and that way, if there's any changes to legislation, if there's any reason to change things, I don't think that we're going to have it at all, but, you know, there's the time to present, um, any changes, and to also present the information fresh again before the fall town meeting, which this will be on the, uh, warrant part of, at a warrant article, so.
If it's approved, is it first applicant to show up against it or not?
Well, whoever owns the property has the rights to it.
Whoever buys it and is developing.
Yep, exactly.
Or like Brian said, if you own the land, and then already.
But, and it's like, okay, you're welcome.
Yeah, it's worth a lot more now, but, thank you, Liz, just wanna say thank you for getting your time for the committee.
Yeah, you're welcome.
So, I'm sure it's a, a lot of, a lot of work.
But I think, uh, one last thing, the fight for this is now at the state level, like, if you wanna fight this, you have to fight the state to get the state law change, it's not people in town and take a stand, but the, it's kind of lost unless it's taken up, right, actually, to the.
Yep.
Exactly, at a higher level.
Yep. Yeah, and the, the town did, the select board at the start of this whole process did write a letter to the state, basically request a waiver from this, because Bellingham's housing production, as far as see the state average, and we've done our part to put as many units, and we've got a lot of construction in town over the past few years.
So well over a forty B requirement?
Yeah, yeah, and the state did not budge. So, um, that's where we're at, so that was, it just wanted to present to you folks, I'm sure this will be print, well, the planning board meeting, we were supposed to present the last meeting, but didn't get to, because the meeting went pretty long, so. Anyway.
Thanks, Rob.
Yeah.
Thank you very much, Rob.
Hey, no problem.
We do have members of the public, it is, I just wanted to make sure.
So I did have one, oh, two questions really, but the first one would be if I have to assume that that end-of-year deadline is just on the approval and not necessarily on any development plans or approvals?
Correct, so there's no, the, the actual regulations and requirements, they do not require that these units actually get built, they only require that there's zoning in place as a right to build these, so if this ends up passing, and there's no development whatsoever, no developer even utilizes the zoning, which there's cross, yeah, hopefully that's what happens, um, we're still in compliance, cause we're meeting the zoning requirement for it, and that's all the state requires is zoning.
And, and Rob, you should, you should mention that any, um, application under the zoning overlay still has to go through the planning board process.
Correct, yeah, the, it's, it's by right, which means that you, yeah, you still have to go in front of the planning board to, to develop.
The secondary question to that would be if one of these towns that are currently, you know, taking a stand against the state, were to pursue this legally and win, would the town then revert the zoning back to its original stance now?
That's a tough question, because I don't, I, I feel pretty confident that if, if that were an option, I, I feel like the town would take that stance, but I, I don't know what that, what is going to happen, um. I can tell you that it seems like the state has had a very, very firm stance on not really allowing any waivers, they are holding very fast to these, to this requirement, so as Brian said, it would have to be a legal fight, and I don't know what the implications would be for towns to revert back to zoning. I can tell you that if that were an option, I feel very confident that that would be how Bellingham would approach it, but you know, I don't know what the future holds.
Will go back with the public.
Correct, yep, yep, any zone change has to go, uh, to town meeting.
Okay, I don't wanna go down a revenue, but now I have this question there. Um, the Curtis Apartments has that lot that's not developed.
Correct, that's clear, correct.
That would be, they could put something back.
They could, it's eligible, that would be if this passes.
That would be low-hanging fruit, they could put, right.
Correct.
Not a very large lot, so they would have to have.
Correct, I mean, they would most likely be able to construct another building, um, there, and Dennis Frain has mentioned during the, um, subcommittee meetings that he's been approached, and they are interested in developing that open parcel, so the other thing.
Oh, I was just gonna say, Brian, it sounds like they wanna develop it anyway, so that's one way that we can quote-unquote, get those units to count under, you know, our required number of housing production. So they, they might build an extra building, and those units would be there anyway. Now, they're on, if they're under the overlay, that counts towards that new regulation.
But could they, I guess my question is, given the density, could they build a structure that is taller?
No, nope, so, pardon, that's a good question, so the intensity regulations for the zoning, would, it would hold whatever the underlying zoning is, cause this is an overlay, unless we wanted to add to the overlay more, uh, I guess, increase the intensity for that development, but we, we're not looking at that, we, when Sarah, the consultant, ran the model, she used the same parameters for what's allowed in that zone, and what the Curtis currently uses, cause, yeah, you don't want like a ten-story structure to be built, and I assume that's what you're kind of, what that's certain wants. So that's, that's one thing, and then the other thing too, just to know is, um, you know, the whole, the purpose of this zoning is obviously for the state to increase housing along the MBTA lines, and as much as we, I guess as much as we're meeting the compliance model, it is also, I think, nice to have a, an ace in our sleeve about to the Attorney General, if they were to ever question this, that, well, you're not really meeting the intent of this bylaw, and the fact that there is definitely an area that can be uh, developed, units can be added, and it sounds like the developer is interested in doing that, we are meeting the intent of the regulations, and it's kind of nice that we're kind of focusing on that one area that is already, they already are looking at developing, so.
That was a forty B, right, that went in.
Yep. Correct.
Do they get, uh, would it have special allowances like a forty B that they could kind of subvert, step back?
We can't, um.
Or we don't know?
That's a good question, but.
Cause the height is the main one, but I wonder what that too, can they, yeah.
They, I don't believe that they can get, they would have to go for a variance for the height, I'm pretty sure. Um, because it's the subdivision regulations that you end up, you can waive, I'm pretty sure.
I thought that, that the whole, the, other than the density, the other components that scares the towns, that they come in much like a forty B does, and said, oh, your zoning regulations are nice, but we don't have to follow them.
Hmm.
You know, so unless it's a health, safety.
Correct, so.
I could be very wrong, but I thought that was the.
Yeah, and I I'm a little hesitant to answer that right now, cause I'm not too sure, but I I know that with the overlay, you, you have to use the, the, um, pre-existing zoning on the, the zone that you're overlaying on, the forty B component does get a little bit hairy, cause the other thing too, like a forty B that requires a, you know, a specific amount of affordable units, that is one thing, one thing that we are allowed to do with this is, besides being by right, we can add a ten percent affordable, uh, component to this overlay, which that requirement is something that the, the subcommittee has looked at, and we think we want to do that, just because we wanna stay above that ten percent mark, um, but that's the other thing too, that I don't I don't believe that they would be able to even submit an application for a forty B, because, I mean, they could, and, well, they, that's a good point, number one, with the density, and number two, the town isn't obligated to actually grant any approval for a forty B, it would have to be a friendly forty B in order for it to work. So, I could see a town that isn't above the ten percent mark, that could be a serious issue, but, um, I, I think we would be okay from Bellingham's perspective, we're in a pretty good, we're in a good, I think a better situation than a lot of other communities as far as our approach with this, cause there's not a lot of communities going further west that have developments like the Curtis or the Charles. The fact we can put this on top of those is helpful. Any other?
Not very helpful.
Well, good, excellent.
Great, any other? I don't know, no, I don't know, great.
Were you here for the MBTA specifically, or? Were you here for the MBTA specifically or?
I I think so, I don't know why today, the truth, I put this on my calendar, but something must have caught my interest at the last planning board meeting, so.
Okay, alright.
Just judging by the.
Yeah. Well, welcome. Just wanted to make sure.
Those minutes?
Yeah, so we'll go over the minutes. Did anybody have any comments coming?
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, have a great day.
Yeah, for me, it was just um misspelling of my name, honestly, on page three. Um that was the main one. Those are easy to know notice for me. I need to keep them spelling in place, man.
You're very.
Maybe maybe when Peter is here.
Very picky.
Maybe officially I should state that I am interim chairman today in place of Peter Gabriel.
Obviously, it's got the hat, Ray, I'm.
Ray, I'm. Not a bad name, still. Very good.
Yeah, I did otherwise, yeah, then I'll move to approve the minutes. Which I've revision that you talked about, thank you. Second, second, all favor?
Aye, aye.
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 So. Can I get a motion to close?
There's one thing, I was thinking, and I was gonna make the suggestion to the planning board, um. Perhaps, and I know you have a lot of ideas, uh.
You why?
Or the, at least for the pl- planning board and um and things like that, perhaps. It would be good as a board that we develop a goal. Like, what do we wanna come, other than just sort of be reactionary and come, people come before us and do all the stuff they normally do, is there a goal? Really wanna look at this, we wanna change this, we wanna figure this out. You know, I thought that might be.
Is it a single goal or kind of a list of?
Whatever, there's something, but between now and say July, and I'm sure you have a whole list of things, I'm sure that you can.
Yeah, there there is a lot of stuff that's in the works currently, um which is really exciting. Um I know one of the things that's gonna be in front of the planning board next Thursday is. We have to meet on the EPA MS four compliance for all of our stormwater in town. So it's gonna be a pretty significant overhaul for stormwater regulations, which. Ryan, I'm sure you're very excited about, I'm very excited about it, as a civil engineer, um other people might say, what is this, but. That's one item that I think we as a town should even develop moving forward, developing it even more. Just based on some of the issues we've seen in town, the other thing too that was brought up in front of planning board years ago that actually. We ended up brushing the dust off of it and it's gonna come back is drive through zoning regulations.
I was gonna say that.
We need that, we have none, there is absolutely zero regulations, no bylaws about driving, it's like queue inside, nothing. And I think we've been, we've been lucky that there hasn't really been too many drive through uh applications in front of us. But that's gonna be one of those things that comes in front of the planning board, you know, in a few years, or ZBA, and you're gonna look at it and say. This only allows like five cars stacking, this isn't gonna work, and. The applicant can say it's gonna work for our business model and it doesn't show your bylaws, so. Items like that, I think, would be awesome.
You just fixed the dairy queue um back up in the summer.
That's.
Yeah, on turn they.
That's a way line example.
I don't wanna get rid of it, I think they just add another window or whatever.
Yeah, but that's a.
I feel like going to the parking lot behind it.
I was thinking, and and I know that there's some um something happening at the state level, but. Like for us, in law apartments, is there something looking at that? That something that we can, I know that maybe streamline the process a bit, but is there?
Yeah.
Something we can take a look at that.
Definitely.
Maple Street's always kind of, yeah, there's certain areas too, I guess, and down that, yeah.
Anyway, just something to think about.
Yeah, and I I will say that I envision in the near future that it would be phenomenal if we could create similar to like the um. MBTA subcommittee, another subcommittee, an ad hoc committee to look at specifically the zoning bylaws. That'll probably take like years of looking at and finessing it, but it needs to happen, it.
Is that something the zoning board should do, or just another committee will come and present to the board and make recommendations?
I think, in my opinion, it should be a joint effort between ZBA and planning, cause you're the two boards that are greatly affected by it. And um not only that, but you also have the really useful insight of being able to know, like, okay, I've. Seen applications come in front of me for years, and this has been an issue, this has been an issue, I'd like to change this. So taking that approach, I think, would be phenomenal if if it can be done, and I think it can, um I would just have to see, cause I know with. ZBA is a little bit different than planning board where, you know, you can talk about specific general business, but. Not allowed to, like, an applicant can't come in here and get preliminary information from you folks without an application in front of you, so. We just, I'd have to double check the town council on that, but I agree, Brian, I think it's an excellent idea and something that the town really should be looking at, cause. We have been very reactionary and not proactive a lot of since.
Well, I mean, for the past two years, it's been, you know, just. No, nobody at the helm and.
Correct, yeah.
And become.
Yeah. The town decided to hire this clown.
Everyone else said no, so.
Yeah. We're gonna scrape the bottom of the barrel and we'll get Rob in here, so.
Is there a window to get the bylaws updated?
No, well, so the EPA thing that there is, we have to meet compliance, we're way over the deadline, I think. I shouldn't laugh, but I think that we we exceeded the deadline, I think it was supposed to be either, I think it was twenty twenty or twenty twenty one, you're supposed to be complying with that.
It was last year.
Yeah, exactly, yeah, we're, it is now twenty twenty four, halfway through twenty twenty four, and. So we're hoping to be in compliance by the end of June for that.
Okay.
Um that's the only one that's like really critical right now, but um. So there's no real deadline, I think the sooner the better to get on it, to start brainstorming some ideas. The um the drive through regulation, I know that was one thing that definitely I wanted to bring up as general business years ago. Just to the ZBA, just because it does affect you, um the other one was select board, cause they apparently they do a license for. Drive through, I think you told me that, right?
I think.
Okay.
Could be wrong.
Yeah, I just learned that fact right now.
Okay, touche, so, yeah, anyway, um so that'll be coming up soon. So that was a very well-written bylaw.
Rob wrote it.
So, um yeah, cool, and then the other thing too, for July meeting, um I know uh Peter's not here, but you probably wanna do reorganization. I think you're up for it every year, you you did mention that.
Yes.
Yes.
Traditionally, it follows the. Uh. County.
Correct.
Town.
Yeah, so. Push that.
You want to win a year?
No, I don't know, I can't remember, I don't think it's been a year, but no.
Doesn't feel like it.
But we were, we were way late the last time, we never, Brian was chairman for two years.
Yeah.
I didn't, well, it never came up.
It never, it didn't come up, you're okay with it.
Cause you're so darn qualified.
So, you're so good at it.
Yeah, so that's something too that, I mean, if you wanna push it off, like you can, I think, but. You might wanna get on the cycle.
Yeah, yeah, but it's not, is it a part of the bylaw?
I don't believe so.
I don't know, like, there's no term limits or anything like that?
I think that the requirement is when there's a change in the members. I believe so, but a lot of time, like you see other boards, and they'll just do a reorganization, like you said, Brian, where it's just. As soon as town meeting happened, or the elections happened, just do it again, and sometimes a good chairman stays the same.
Everybody should get an opportunity to be chairman.
Yeah, I I do, I really like how both ZBA and the select board. Just keeps transitioning, cause it just, it makes a lot of sense, keeps everything fresh, yeah.
So. Been discussing. And then um. Traditionally, in our July meetings, the town planner actually caters that.
Of course, of course, of course.
So we'd like to keep the tradition going.
Absolutely, of course, yeah, yeah, what do you, filet mignon, lobster?
Nothing great, no.
Edimental.
Yeah, great, oh, man, it wasn't in the description.
It's still being recorded.
Yeah.
All right.
All right.
Cool, I'll move to a German.
Can I get a second? Got a second, all in favor?
Aye, aye.
Aye.
So moved.
All right.
Everyone.
Excellent, thank you, have a great night, Liz.
Have a great one, Liz.
Bye, Liz. Thank you.